It is 9:00 AM. Today is May 4th, 2021. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the County of Lake. We will start today with a moment of silence. Is there any moment of silence from any of our board members today? So I know that this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I know that our teachers have had a very difficult and arduous task to continue to educate our children throughout these trying times. And so I want us to think of all of our educators and all those involved in education, and be thankful for the work that they've done in this past year and continue to do. Supervisor Pesca, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. Item number four, do we have any extra items appearing from staff or board members? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to item number five, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that any board members wish to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion? So I am going to pull item number 5.4, and I believe it's 5.18, for further discussion. And I'm going to open it up for the public. And if you're in the Zoom room, please click the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand or dial *9 if you're calling via telephone. But go ahead and let us know if you wish to pull an item. I do see we have a hand from Jennifer Denham. If we can check in and see if it was to pull an item on the consent agenda. And if it's not, you can always click the button again to lower your hand, I believe. And Jake, are we?
I, uh, sorry, Jennifer, I do see you... I do see you unmuting there, but then I also see the mute going back on.
Looks like your hand went down. And so unless you did that yourself, then maybe that means no comment for this portion. And again, this is for the consent agenda. And I see that we have Will Tuttle with his hand up. Jennifer, does it look like we're getting audio from your mic now?
Okay, I'm here. Thank you. I don't know why I can't get my picture up.
Well, we can see your picture. Do you have an item that you wish to pull from the consent agenda?
Um, I wish to speak...
Okay, we will have public-
Regarding IHSS?
Okay, we will have public comment opened up a little bit later today, maybe in about five minutes. And so let's go ahead and just, if you wish to pull an item from the consent agenda, go ahead and let us know which one, or else, please be patient, and we'll get to that.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean. I apologize for that. I can't see anything, so...
So we will open up public comment for any other public comment that is not related to any agenda item on our agenda, and that will be coming up shortly.
Thank you.
And I believe I saw that Dr. Tuttle's hand went down. So let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for approval of the rest of the consent agenda. Again, I pulled 5.4 and 5.18. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve items 5.1 through 5.3, 5.5 through 5.17.
Second?
I have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pesca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's go ahead and we'll get to those a little bit later. Let's move on to our 9:05 AM item, public input. This is where the public has the ability to make any comments up to three minutes that is not related to an item on our agenda. And let's go ahead and open up for public comment. And this is where we want to go back to, I forget her last name, but it was Jennifer something. We can go ahead and start with her. Jennifer Denham.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
I can start now?
Yeah, go ahead and give us your comment.
I apologize. Hello, my name is Jennifer Denham, and I will be reading from a prepared statement. In 2007, I was department manager at Long's Drugstore in Healdsburg. Summer had arrived, and I was unable to find childcare for my son with autism. I called Human Resources in Sonoma County for help, and they referred me to IHSS. And in August of 2007, I became his care provider. Between 2007 and 2018, I had built my pay rate up to $13 an hour. I was doing well and was able to save to buy our home in Lake County. However, that is where my problems began. You see, when IHSS came to my home, I was informed they would only hire me here for $11 an hour and that I needed to take up the grievance with my union. When I did that, I found out there had been no contract with the county since 2017. $2 was a huge pay cut for me. Fortunately, I am back up to $14 an hour, but there is still no contract as of 2021, and I urge the Board of Supervisors to amend this problem. IHSS providers are the biggest workforce in this county, but it would still be hard for me to find a qualified provider for my son with the pay rate established here. We are a workforce that has provided, proved beneficial in emergency situations, namely fire and blackouts, a second line of first responders, if you will, and don't get me started on COVID. President Joe Biden said at the recent joint session of Congress, and I quote, "For too long, caregivers who are disproportionately women, people of color, and immigrants have been unseen, underpaid, and undervalued. The President of the United States sees us. Now we need you to see us, respect us, protect us, and pay us. Thank you for your time."
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have a hand from Raul Gardea.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so my name is Raul Gardea with CIU Local 2015, the union representing the 1,800 approximately in-home supportive service workers here in Lake County. And, you know, after on-and-off negotiations since 2017, home care workers in Lake County are ready for a change. Disaster after disaster, you know, union IHSS workers have put their own interests on the back burner as the county's priority constantly shifted to address the immediate concern and crisis of any given year, right? And away from our bargaining. So it's a shame that it's like a global pandemic for folks to recognize essential workers. But unfortunately, essential is usually just a code word for expendable, low-wage work. Caregivers have been doing essential work every single day to keep our most vulnerable community members safe. So the Board of Supervisors and the CAO stated economic development plans include workforce development as a top priority. IHSS caregivers, 1,800 of them, are the workforce. Throughout this pandemic, IHSS workers have faced inconsistent access to PPE and have had to rely on donations from other healthcare unions to protect themselves and their recipients. IHSS workers do not receive basic job training and must seek it out on their own, out of pocket. Lake County is the largest county in Northern California that still pays caregivers minimum wage. So when it comes to caregiving standards, Lake County stands alone in all the wrong ways. If we want to make workforce development a priority, we're not off to a great start if we don't include the largest public workforce, the 1,800 caregivers, who have been denied even minimal job protections and improvements by this board since 2017. Since the county only pays a fraction of IHSS wages, the county has left millions of matched state and federal dollars on the table over the past four years. This year, we can't afford to walk away any longer, and with the looming change in the county's maintenance of effort, neither from the county. So a fair contract is the first step into bringing dignity to not just the workforce in Lake County, but the thousands of IHSS recipients who rely on these workers. It's time for less talk and more action from the board. And we need more than thoughts and prayers, right? And so as CIU 2015 members prepare to return to the bargaining table with county management in the coming weeks, we look forward to and expect a serious and comprehensive proposal from this board that truly honors the work of caregivers. So let's get this done, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any further public comment? Again, on anything that is not on our agenda today? And I see we have Will Tuttle. Let's go ahead and unmute him.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, um, thank you very much. This is Dr. Will Tuttle. I wanted to, first of all, just thank you last week for saying that you agree that it's not a good idea to push hard on the proposed vaccine passports in Lake County because they're discriminatory and really, in many ways, many justice people are talking about this. It's creating a two-party, a two-tier system of, of, of privilege. But I'm still very concerned about the, the emphasis on getting, promoting vaccines. These are, these are not vaccines after all. It's a genetic treatment. And I wanted to really emphasize the fact, for example, Dr. Peter McCullough, who holds the honor of being the most cited medical doctor on COVID-19 treatments at the National Library of Medicine with more than 600 citations, has testified before Congress and won numerous awards during his distinguished medical career. And just, he's pointing out in a recent interview that just, that right now, there's over 3,500 deaths reported directly to the VAERS system and 12,000 serious injuries. This is completely unprecedented in any, in history of any vaccine. Back in late March, for example, when he gave the interview, he's talking about at that point, there was over 2,000 deaths with 77 million people vaccinated. He's taught, he compared that, for example, to the seasonal flu, where there's 195 million people getting shots, and at the most, there's 20 to 30 deaths. When they did the SARS outbreak, after only 25 deaths, they pulled the whole program. The, and so the, the whole governmental system is based right now on ignoring the deaths and the devastation of this vaccine and making everyone in the system, the medical system parrot the official line that these are safe and effective, when in fact, they're causing massive death and devastation and paralysis to many people. And now there's the new information coming out that people who are vaccinated are causing unvaccinated people to have all kinds of illnesses as well. So we, I really want to encourage the board to do research into this and to stop promoting a deadly, death-dealing, destructive force into Lake County. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any further public comments? We have Elaine Zacker.
Yes. Good morning. I would like to urge the board and the public health officials to observe the precautionary principle when it comes to advocating the use of the COVID-19 vaccine. I know it's touted, touted as safe and effective, but if you look deeper, the evidence shows that it's not safe and it's not effective. As far as safety goes, you can go to the CDC website or to the Department of Health and Human Services website and look up the VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Reactions. And there are quite a few. And the, there are serious reactions, and there are quite a few deaths. And there is a Harvard study that estimates that only 10% of adverse events are reported. Also, as far as effectiveness, people are getting COVID after being vaccinated. Now, I have read that infections are down, and it is, some attribute that to the vaccination. Well, infections are always down this time of year when people are getting plenty of vitamin D. I think the real test of the effectiveness will be next December during flu season. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. I feel the need to follow up the comment. Yes, there are approximately 3,400 deaths that the CDC itself on his website is stating could potentially be caused because of the vaccine. Out of 100 million people in the United States that are vaccinated, it's 0.004%. Some people are touting that the survival rate of the, of the virus is 99.7%, which is absolutely false. That's if you only correlate deaths to the entire population. If you do deaths to cases, it is closer to 1.78%. It is a matter of saving lives, and the virus is much deadlier, 500 times deadlier than what we know of, of about, of the vaccine with 100 million plus being vaccinated. So thank you for bringing this up. But the fact is, if some people are going to tout that the virus is not dangerous, but yet tout to us that the vaccine is dangerous, it's a little confusing as to what the argument truly is. Everybody should definitely do their due diligence to make sure that there is no side effects. Some people are allergic to some of the products in there. There are some rare situations of that. And I would say, please speak with your primary doctor as that would probably be your best person to speak with. And we have another person, Seva. I'm not going to say it right, Giumelli?
Yes, correct.
Go for it.
How do I unmute here? Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are. We can hear you.
Oh, good. Um, I'm, I'm an IHSS provider, and I was offered the vaccine in the first part of February when it first came to the county. And because I work with seniors outside of my home, I had no qualms whatsoever about taking that vaccine. And ever since I took the two vac, I took the Pfizer. I took two shots. I had no side effects. And I feel like I'm safer when I go to my client's house each day. I'm sorry these other two people think that it's dangerous, but I'm here to tell you, I'm a living testament. I've taken them. They didn't hurt me. The worst I got was a sore arm. And what will hurt me if I don't take them is the COVID if I catch it. And there's people dying in Lake County because they didn't take vaccines and because they did get the COVID-19. So I'm sorry. I disagree with the two former people. And a lot of our providers would disagree as well. We've taken the vaccine because we're trying to keep our residents safe. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I do not see any further hands up in the board chambers or in the Zoom room. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment and move on to item 6.2 or 9:06 AM, Presentation of Proclamation Commending Operation Tango Mike for 18 Years of Support for Military Personnel and Their Families. And I am going to ask Supervisor Crandall to please read this presentation.
Okay, so I'd like to welcome Ginny. And this is a proclamation commending Operation Tango Mike for 18 years of support for military personnel and their families. Operation Tango Mike has supported deployed military personnel throughout Operation Enduring Freedom, Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation New Dawn, Operation Onward Liberty, Operation Inherent Resolve, and Operation Freedom Sentinel. And whereas Operation Tango Mike has shipped more than 22,000 care packages to deployed personnel and assisted multitudes of families in the military. And whereas Operation Tango Mike coordinates annual collection and distribution of Christmas gifts and school supplies for military families. And whereas Operation Tango Mike has coordinated and hosted many welcome home celebrations and ceremonies for returning troops. And whereas Operation Tango Mike has assisted in honoring three of Lake County's fallen heroes in the global war on terror. And whereas the Secretary of Defense has recognized families and community members as the power behind the power. And whereas the Operation Tango Mike fills a crucial role in supporting family members and loved ones of our armed forces and provides a compassionate, community, and incalculable moral support to families and loved ones. And whereas Operation Tango Mike will mark 18 years of unwavering support for military personnel and families on March 19th, 2021. Now therefore be it proclaimed and that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby commend and express its gratitude to Operation Tango Mike for their commitment, dedication, and invaluable service to military personnel and their families, passed and adopted this fourth day of May, 2021.
This took me by surprise. I thought I was here for a proclamation for National Military Appreciation Month. So I guess I'll be requesting that one again to get it on your agenda.
Oops.
March did mark our 18th anniversary. We actually surpassed 23,000 care packages sent from this community. I'm grateful for the community's support. We meet people from other communities, much larger, bigger population, bigger tax base. And they say, we used to have a troop support program. And I'm proud to say, Lake County still does. We have not stopped packing and shipping because of COVID. We're doing it on a, in a whole different way, like everybody else. But deployments didn't stop, and neither did we. They need us. So thank you for this. And I will be requesting a proclamation for National Military Appreciation Month so that we can include that in every care package we send. Thank you.
We will have to, we will have to see you again later this month. I, I do want to, there's times where I think of these proclamations as to, words are words, but actions are actions. And, and I was thinking about this, and how can we help Ginny Craven to let our troops know that we support what they're doing? We support them. And just wondering, I'm not going to ask that it be done, but I'm going to do this myself, that we could possibly write our own personal letter, pass it on to Ginny, where she can go ahead and copy it and put it in each of the care packages. That way, there's a little bit of a personal touch that this is coming from Lake County. Up to you folks, if you want to do this. I'll make sure that our CAO gives her, gives Ginny's email address to you so that we can get that information to her if we so choose to. So thank you very much, Ginny, for all the work that you do. And we will see you again later this month. Apologize for the confusion.
I'll send you another email.
They are. The, the letters that go to the soldiers. In being deployed myself, you, you get a sense of loneliness. And even though, you know, you're far away, you have companionship with your, with your, you know, military comrades, when you get something from home, it's like, it feels really good. And it just touches your heart to just have someone tell you that they're thinking of you, regardless of who they are or what it is, you know? So I, I wrote a letter last time I helped during COVID as well, and I'll be glad to write another one because it does feel good. So again, thank you, Ginny.
I won't, I won't touch this.
We, we've turned off your mic. Hold on one sec. Sam will turn you back on.
Just to reiterate what EJ said, so that some of you may be considering if you're on the fence about a letter, this is a message that we received from a young man in Afghanistan. And I, I don't want to give his name or his unit number for operational security, but he said, "On behalf of our unit, we'd like to thank you so much for all the wonderful care packages we have received. Just know that you have changed one person's life out here in Afghanistan. I miss being home, and I miss my family. But this has changed me so much with these care packages. I have a new outlook on life now, and you have given me light in a dark time." I think he says it better than I could. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. And so we'll go ahead and move on to our 6.3 item, 9:08 AM. Presentation of Proclamation Designated the Month of May, 2021, as CalFresh Awareness Month. And I will read it here from the dais. Proclamation Designated the Month of May, 2021, as CalFresh Awareness Month. Whereas, CalFresh is a monthly benefit for food purchases that helps low-income residents gain access to healthy foods, and participation can play a crucial role in improving the health and status of vulnerable populations. And whereas every dollar in CalFresh generates $1.79 in local economic activity. And whereas, 12,729 individuals in Lake County are currently receiving CalFresh benefits totaling $2.7 million per month, $29.3 million in benefits over the course of the last year. And whereas, the County of Lake Department of Social Services recognizes the need to reduce hunger by increasing access to and participation in food assistance benefits, particularly for elderly, disabled, families, and children, and is committed to an outreach and public awareness campaign to increase awareness of potentially eligible Lake County residents about the benefits of CalFresh. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the month of May, 2021, as CalFresh Awareness Month, passed and adopted this fourth day of May, 2021. And I do want to check real quick to see if Director Markatan is with us today. I do see Rachel Dilman, if she would like to speak on this.
Yeah, hello. I'm Rachel Dilman. I'm the CalFresh Program Manager for Lake County Social Services. And I'd like to thank the board for proclaiming May, 2021, as CalFresh Awareness Month. Particularly during the COVID-19 pandemic, it's more important than ever to help our vulnerable populations connect with food resources. And there are some temporary rules right now to help us do just that. Some of those rules include a monthly emergency allotment, so customers are receiving the maximum CalFresh allotment right now during the pandemic, or an additional $95 to their regular allotment, whichever is greater. Telephonic signatures, so customers can sign their documents over the telephone. No in-person or paper required. Interview waivers, so we can skip interviews if customers are completing their applications and submitting verifications that we need. Excluding pandemic unemployment compensation, which means we don't have to count it in the budget. Increasing benefits by 15%, so all CalFresh households' benefits are increased an additional 15%. And expanding student eligibility, so students who are eligible to federal or state work study or who have an expected family contribution of $0 can now receive CalFresh. So all of these temporary rules have different expiration dates, but they are all currently in place. Additionally, spending benefits locally helps our economy. And through the Market Match Program, you can double your CalFresh benefits at your local farmer's markets. That's like shopping for 50% off at the farmer's market. So please see your farmer's market host for additional details or visit marketmatch.org. If you need CalFresh benefits, please apply today. To apply for CalFresh, go to getcalfresh.org. That's all one word, G-E-T-C-A-L-F-R-E-S-H.org. Or call us Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, at 707-995-4200 for information on other ways to apply. Lastly, I want to thank my staff, without whom providing these vital public services could not be possible. I appreciate you all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dilman. And I also want to thank you for the hard work your staff has done throughout COVID-19 as that's kind of exacerbated the access to food for people, especially if they became unemployed or were impacted in other ways by the pandemic. So thank you so much for everything. Any other comments from board members before we move on? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to our 9:10 AM item, Presentation of Proclamation Designated the Month of May as 2021 Mental Health Month. Supervisor Scott will go ahead and present.
Thank you. Board Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation Designating the Month of May, 2021, as Mental Health Month. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas, all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And I'd have to say, many of us have experienced that this last year. And whereas, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And whereas, there is a strong body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle the challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas, mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas, with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, the Lake County Behavioral Health Services, along with each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and resident, shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental health and support prevention efforts. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the County, that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim May, 2021, as Mental Health Month in Lake County and calls upon the residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, business and schools in Lake County to encourage our community to increase the awareness and understanding of mental health and the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions, passed and adopted this fourth day of May, 2021.
Thank you very much. Any- Any further comments, wondering if we have Director Metcalf? Yes, we do, and he seems to be live on video.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Scott, and thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for reading this proclamation. I've actually, I know you guys are tired of seeing me, so I've asked our clinical deputy director, James Isherwood, and possibly our mental health program manager, Ronnie Duncan, to say a few words about this. I know, I think all of you saw maybe yesterday, I sent out the first edition of our newsletter. Lake County Behavioral Services has put together a newsletter, which we're hoping to send out on a quarterly basis to raise awareness around not only mental health issues, but substance use disorder and homelessness issues. So, I'm going to turn it over to James Isherwood, I believe you're here. Would love to hear from you, and/or Ronnie, if you'd like to say a few words.
And Jake, if we can make sure that, there we go.
Well, I'll say something. Thank you very much to the board for recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month. It's really important, I think, especially this year with all the isolation and various forms of grief that people are going through, that we're recognizing mental health and supporting people through it. So, thank you very much. And I think James has his hand up as well.
Yep, and there he is. He's unmuted.
Yes, good morning. Greetings to the board and everybody attending the meeting today. Wow, what a year we've experienced. The kindness and resilience of Lake County has never been more apparent to me than what we've experienced over the last year, and I feel like I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout-out to the folks at Public Health and everything they've done to help us through this past year, including the disastrous service workers that have helped. They say that this pandemic that we're experiencing, it's not over yet, is going to lead to a second pandemic related to mental health and behavioral health issues. We've been quietly preparing to receive the additional work that we're expecting. In the past year, the last six months of two thousand and twenty, we saw an increase of inquiries for behavioral health services at twenty-four percent over the last six months of two thousand and nineteen, including an eighty-three percent increase in people who received a first service. So, they were linked to a service. That was a huge increase over the last six months last year, and I don't think we've even scratched the surface yet. I'm not going to talk a lot about prevention. Next week is National Prevention Week for Behavioral Health, and we'll be back here at the meeting. But I want to remind everybody that mental health conditions can affect anybody, and one in five adults every year experience a mental health condition, and of those, twenty percent of those mental health challenges become serious. And when they become serious, they become ours at the county level. It's amazing what a good diet, good sleep, and some really good deep breaths every day can do for a person. And if we can all take it upon ourselves to learn how to support each other and mental health, the community can be there for each other. This month is sponsored by a variety of agencies nationwide, National Alliance of Mental Health, or Mental Illness, otherwise known as NAMI, are putting out a message that you are not alone. Now more than ever, we need to find ways to stay connected with our community. No one should feel alone. If you or someone you know is feeling this way, you can call us at nine nine four, seven zero nine zero during business hours, and be linked to our access team. After hours or in the event of a crisis, you can reach us at one eight hundred, nine hundred, two zero seven five. Thank you. You're getting a great one.
Thank you very much. And we also have Jolene Treadaway, who wanted to make a comment.
Hi, yes, Jolene Treadaway, Redwood Community Services. I wanted to say that RCS is proud to be a partner with Lake County Behavioral Health Services, and I know that we share in our vision to live in a community where people feel seen, heard, and valued. And with that said, I wanted to thank our providers who are, this last year especially, have been having to reinvent the wheel of what does it mean to provide service to some of our most vulnerable populations, and have been showing up continually committed and dedicated to providing service to those in need. There is a great need and suffering among residents in Lake County who are experiencing mental illness, and that need is going to grow as we come back together in person. And so, thank you to those who are on the front lines, who are working with clients. Thank you to Behavioral Health Services for continuing to show up alongside us and with us, and I truly believe that our work will lead to people being able to live vibrant, healthy lives. And so, thank you to the board for recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you very much for all of your comments. Appreciate the hard work that Behavioral Health has had to go through, again, during this pandemic, and looking to support and see what is needed to continue the work as we get out of this pandemic. Any other comment from supervisors before we move on?
Just that James struck it right on the head when he said it is about reaching out and checking in on each other. That's what we need to be doing now more than ever, checking on our neighbors. We've been isolated. If you're not seeing somebody that you normally see, go check on in them. If somebody's not acting right, you know, just go talk to them. And if, you know, they need services, try to help them navigate the system to get the help that is needed. It's all about helping each other.
Thank you for that. Supervisor?
Yeah, I'd like to just follow up with that also, is, you know, there is still somewhat of a stigma, stigmatism on the mental health issues here in the United States, but, you know, I just want to, you know, send a message to anyone out there, please reach out. There are opportunities, as you said, friends, family, other things, you know, it's a lot of self-medication going on, and we're dealing with that here locally, I think, you know, especially with our homeless population and others, but just throughout the entire county. So, please reach out, be brave. I know it's not easy, but there are support systems out there, but please, talk about it, and there should be no stigmatism. Our health and our welfare as humans together, we can take care of. So, I just think it's so important, we may have all, but I know I've had folks that we've lost, that I've lost in my life, that, you know, sometimes a simple conversation might have changed the outcome, and I just want to let everybody know, don't let it be a stigmatism. I think anyone who reaches out is just brave to do so, and we just need to encourage each other, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Any other comment on this before we move on? Thank you very much to the team, and we will move on to the next presentation, our nine-ten twelve AM item, Presentation of Proclamation Designated in the Month of May, two thousand and twenty-one as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month in Lake County, and Supervisor Pyska will present.
Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation Designating the Month of May, two thousand and twenty-one as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas, maternal mental health is an issue of great concern to Lake County's parents, families, and healthcare providers, and whereas, these disorders can affect any mother, regardless of age, race, or income level. And whereas, many women are not adequately informed about, screened, or treated for pregnancy and postpartum mood and anxiety disorders. And whereas, heightened awareness and stigma reduction are essential for improving outcomes for mothers, children, families, and communities. And whereas, pregnancy and postpartum mood and anxiety disorders are highly treatable through therapeutic intervention, community-based supportive services, and medication. And whereas, health service providers and community support systems must be able to identify risk factors and symptoms in order to provide prompt diagnosis, treatment, and support services that enable full and speedy recovery. And whereas, Motherwise is a proactive program that helps mothers and families through the transition with a new baby to prevent and lessen the effects of perinatal mood and anxiety disorders. Funded through Lake County Behavioral Health by Proposition Sixty-three, the Mental Health Services Act, Motherwise also enjoys the support of many other local and regional programs, including Sutter Lakeside Clinic, Community Clinic, Sutter Lakeside Hospital Family Birth Center, Lake County Tribal Health Consortium, Lake County Public Health, Lake Family Resource Center, Redwood Community Services, Inc., NEST Program, Children's Council, Adventist Health Clear Lake, MCHC Lakeview Health Center, First Five Lake Commission, Centro Latino, La Voz de la Esperanza, Latino Wellness Center, The Voice of Hope, Circle of Minds Wellness Center, Bloom, Lake County Breastfeeding Coalition, Easter Seals Bay Area, E-Center WIC Program, Health Leadership Network, and the Maternal Child Adolescent Health Advisory Board. These diverse groups are working with Motherwise to reduce the frequency and severity of perinatal mood disorder in Lake County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the month of May, two thousand and twenty-one as Maternal Mental Health Awareness Month, and does commend this observance to all citizens, passed and adopted this fourth day of May, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you very much, and I believe we have Motherwise with us today?
You do. Hi, everybody. I'm Jamie White. I work part-time for the Motherwise program, and I am here today to thank all of you guys for recognizing this month as maternal mental health awareness. May third through the seventh is actually Maternal Mental Health Awareness Week, so we've started it off with the proclamation, as well as we're working on, this year's theme is hashtag, um, let me think, Making Over Motherhood. So, that is what the focus is on this year. And this year, the need is more than ever to share stories and to hear our voices heard. So, as many of you guys know, one in four mothers experience some type of perinatal mood and anxiety disorder, and in this county, due to other underlying factors, it's about one in two, so about half the moms that we have experience it. These illnesses frequently go unnoticed and untreated. They're often with tragic and long-term consequences for these mothers. So, with that being said, we want to thank all of the mothers who have had the courage to reach out and ask for help. We're also encouraging all the mothers to participate in the Blue Dot Project, and the Blue Dot is the national symbol for the maternal mental health survivorship, support, and solidarity. So, I brought you guys cool Blue Dot pens, so you can all have some pens. And we're encouraging all mothers to participate in the hashtag Making Over Motherhood. It's all over Facebook right now. If you go to the bluedotproject.org page, they are encouraging moms to reach out. We can also check out the Motherwise main page, that's where all our events are going to be posted, and we are definitely encouraging, I know you said reaching out, and that is one of the big things that Motherwise is doing right now, so we are on, that is our main goal, as you know, we're all isolated. We have been reaching out to every mom that we know of that is pregnant and/or had a baby up to a year after the baby is born, and that has been a tremendous response from the mothers. They are very thankful that they know that they are not alone, and that there are people out here that are worried about them and do care. So, I think that is our main heart and soul right now for Motherwise, and it's really, it truly gets to my heart. So, I thank you guys for doing this, and I encourage everyone to help support Motherwise in making sure that we can reach out to all these moms and babies and ensure that they do have support. So, these are for you guys, and thank you so much.
Thank you. And I will just add something that I don't think that we can have a conversation about Motherwise without thanking Jaclyn Lee for all the efforts that she's made throughout the years. I believe that I met her right around the time where she started Motherwise, and it's only blossomed from there, and well-connected now with the services in the greater county, and looking forward to what might be coming next, because I think she's done an awesome job so far in reaching out and making an impact in our community. So, thank you to the entire team, but thank you as well to Jaclyn.
I second, third, and fourth that. Thank you, Jaclyn. I know she's on there.
I have a comment.
Yes.
So, you know, it is, transitioning into motherhood at any age is difficult, and it can be even more isolating in a rural county like ours, and I just remember being a mother myself and relying so heavily on the network of other moms, and I remember some of my friends going and volunteering to help new moms to the area who didn't know anybody and were feeling very isolated. So, it's such an important work that you do, and I'm very, very appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Looks like we have another comment behind you?
Nope, just, first is.
Awesome.
See, we're all supporting each other.
Thank you so much. We do have a couple hands in the Zoom room. Let's go ahead and start with Director Metcalf.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I mean, I'm so proud to be a part of this. As was mentioned, our department does help fund the Motherwise program, which is just such a tremendous resource for folks here in the community, actually a very unique resource in our community, and I just want to, you know, let you all know that I support the work that's going on at Motherwise and the work that the staff does. It's tremendous. It's a huge job, and I just want to thank them for the work they're doing, and it's just, again, it's an honor to be a part of the work that they're doing. So, I just wanted to give a shout-out to them, and thank you for the work that they're doing for our community, which is much needed, especially now during this pandemic. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think it has exacerbated all issues that we try to deal with and find solutions to, and unfortunately, it's made it more difficult. We have James Isherwood with the comments as well.
Yes, good morning again. I'd like to piggyback on something that you said, Chair Sabatier. In recognizing Jaclyn Lee as the driving force for ten years for this organization, I had the pleasure of being at the Genesis Meeting for this project about twelve years ago, and it just, it fills my heart every time I hear the impact that this program has had on the county and moms and families. They do a lot of work with dads as well, and I know that this effort has made the county better for it. So, again, I want to appreciate Jaclyn's efforts over the years, and shout-out to the people who are there now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And since we've mentioned her name multiple times, and she is with us in the Zoom room, let's go ahead and offer an unmute to Jaclyn Lee.
Hey, Bruno, thank you, and thank you, James, as well, and I think you guys know, but not everyone listening might know, but I did just recently step down from Motherwise, which was really hard for me, but my mother, my own mother passed away, and some other things have been happening, and I'm just really thankful for all of the support you have given myself and the program through the years to help us get to where we are, and I'm really, really thankful for Jamie, who is there today, and Liz Anderson, Raquel Smith. I was really thankful to have this great team to, you know, leave Motherwise knowing that we're still in great hands, and, you know, I know they will look forward to all the support going forward, and it's just been a real pleasure of mine to work with and meet so many local families, and to be able to help in ways that sometimes are hard to put into words, you know, what the difference makes, but, you know, I know it did, and that has been really wonderful, and just to be given an opportunity to do that in my community was wonderful. So, I thank you all, and thank you all for your work in all the areas that you're working in, because it's a big job for everybody. work in all the areas that you're working in, because it's a big job for, for everybody, so thanks again, and, you know, just so glad for Liz and Jamie and Raquel, Motherwise is in really great hands, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
I hate to put Jaclyn on the spot, but do you have an idea of how many mothers you have helped over the last 12 years get support and find community? I'm sure it's...
Um, this, because we have kind of an idea, but we switch databases, so it's probably like between 2 and 3,000, I believe.
So those are 2 and 3,000 mothers that if you weren't there would not have received the support needed to, you know, have healthy babies and healthy lives and, and a healthy family, so I, I thank you for, for all your hard work and your team's work, for, for all the work that you do for the mothers here in Lake County.
Thank you, yeah, thanks, it's, it's been great, and I know they're going to do so much more great stuff as they are officially a nonprofit, so that's exciting, you know, that we, we made a transition and they're ready to go.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the team, and we will go ahead and move on to item 6.6, 914 AM item, Presentation of Proclamation Designated May 3rd through 8th, 2021 Wildfire Preparedness Week, and Supervisor Simon, this is your item, and you will present.
Thank you Supervisor, or Chair Sabatier, Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation designating the week of May 3rd through the 8th, 2021 Wildfire Preparedness Week. Whereas wildfire significantly impacts Lake County's environmental, economic, and social well-being, and whereas residents of Lake County's fire-prone communities need to accept responsibility for living in high-fire hazard areas. And whereas residents, property owners, utility providers, evacuation corridor owners, essential services providers must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management and vegetation reduction surrounding their locations and construction and maintenance to resist wildland fire ignition and fire spread. Whereas wildfires can occur during any month of the year, and whereas residents, property owners, utility providers, evacuation corridor owners, and essential services providers must stay continually, continually vigilant and prepared for wildfire throughout the year. Whereas residents, citizens, and guests should take proactive actions immediately during a wildland fire and/or other emergency to keep themselves safe. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors, in partnership with the Lake County Fire Chiefs Association and the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, supports the week of May 3rd through the 8th of 2021 as Lake County Wildfire Preparedness and call to the action for this year's theme. What you do makes a difference. Wildfire knows no season. As a means of education and a call for residents, property owners, utility providers, evacuation corridor, and essential services providers of Lake County to act now to reduce wildfire threat, spread and prepare their homes, families, and communities for wildfire, and stay prepared throughout the year. And whereas residents and property owners are requested to create 100 feet defensible space, reduce fuels, have your address clearly posted, have a wildland fire ready, set, go plan, and prepare for extended periods without electricity. And whereas utility providers, phone, cable, fiber, electrical, are requested to create defensible space and reduce and/or remove all fuels within 100 feet of infrastructure stations, transmission line systems, earth the sky, and have their address clearly posted. And whereas evacuation and roadway corridor owners, federal, state, county, city, and private, are requested to create defensible space, lim up ladder fuels 10 feet, reduce and/or remove all fuels within 100 feet of the roadways, and whereas essential services providers, hospitals, medical clinics, fire stations, police stations, government facilities, centers for care, and shelter locations are requested to create 100 feet, or create defensible space and reduce and/or remove all fuels within 100 feet of their infrastructure, have their address clearly posted, and prepare for extended periods without electricity. Passed and adopted this fourth day of May 2021, and signed by the Chair of the Board. I just, you know, I don't know if we have any of the fire chiefs on, I'm not on Face, Zoom, I probably almost said Facebook, but on Zoom, but I just want to talk about an event that the Risk Reduction Authority is having this Thursday, May 6th, myself and Jessica and many, many partners will be presenting from 6:00 to 7:30 on Thursday night about just messaging the same thing, it's Wildfire Preparedness Week, we're going to try and get the information out, share services, opportunities, and just educate folks, it'll be the first one done with the Risk Reduction Authority and all the collaborative partners, but it couldn't be any more important, and especially with this year, with the slow precipitation we've had, we need to be prepared. We are better each year in Lake County, you know, but there are a few things just want to, early warnings, pay attention to early warning and evacuation notices if you're possible, please sign up for NICSIL and any other email opportunities that I know the Sheriff and Cal OES has available here in Lake County, and please just coordinate, have a plan, have your medication, have your to-go bags, and be prepared. And also, early warning, if you see smoke, let somebody know, just let's be vigilant, work through things this year, protect each other like we always do, and, you know, that's, that's what I have to say at this point, thank you.
Thank you very much, I don't see any fire chief that I'm aware of in our Zoom room, obviously not in our boardroom, and we have another supervisor before I move on that wishes to say something, please.
Thank you. So, following up with Supervisor Simon's notice about our upcoming virtual town hall, it's going to be on Zoom, we have the, and Facebook Live, we have the Facebook event on the county Facebook page, and I'm hoping we can get that bumped up for this week. What we are going to be talking about is how to prepare your home and your property for fire season, so this is, this week is National Fire Prevention Week, May 1st was National Fire Prevention Day. So, we're going to have Chief Paul Duncan talk about CAL FIRE's recommendations for defensible space around your home. We're going to have a presentation on the hazardous vegetation abatement ordinance, which is part of our county code now, so this is really going to be the first educational piece that we're going to have code enforcement present on, what we require our property owners to do to provide defensible space for themselves and their neighbors. We're going to have a master gardener talk about landscaping and the different ways that you can landscape that's fire-safe around your home. We're going to have a presentation on what it means to become a firewise community, and what are the steps that, you know, and how you go about creating firewise neighborhoods throughout our county, and if you'd like to be a part of it, it's, it's not as difficult as it seems, but we have a pathway laid out. On our website, firesafelake.org has all of the resources that we have kind of pulled together through our county, so I encourage everybody to look at firesafelake.org. And then we're going to have Sheriff Martin talk about Lake Co-Alerts and the importance of signing up for Lake Co-Alerts and not just NICSIL, so that we have multiple layers of communication. So, really what this comes down to is that we're accepting the responsibility that we have to live in fire country, and that this is going to be a part of our life for a long time, so we're really looking forward to this event, it's going to be the first of many that we're planning through the Risk Reduction Authority, and so we're looking forward to seeing all of you, and we really want to encourage everybody to share this out so that we can get as many people as possible participating.
Thank you both for your comments and added to the proclamation. Any further comments from supervisors? Okay, that will complete our presentations for today, and let's go ahead and go back to our items that we pulled from the consent agenda. We are going to start with item 5.4, A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services, and B, approve contract between the Lake County Assessor/Recorder's Office and CoFile Technologies, Inc. for redaction services in the amount of $99,570.55, and authorize assessor recorder to sign. So, there's, the reason I pulled this item and as well as the next item is for the same reason, this has been on my radar for a long time, I see a lot of waiving the formal bidding process, I know we've had a few public members come to us and, maybe not in full understanding, but say it is in the public interest, and we should be doing the bidding, and the fact is, there are certain things that, yes, there is only one choice to go through, and other times there are multiple choices, or there may be multiple choices. And here, I'm seeing us spending for two years $100,000 on something that I don't believe, based on my conversation with the elected assessor and recorder, Richard Ford, that there has ever been a formal bidding process for this in the past. Yes, we've used this company before, but I feel that my job, our job, is to also ensure that we are managing our public funds in the greatest of ways possible, so I do not approve myself of the waiving of the formal bidding, I think this is a good contract to move forward with, but the formal bidding process needs to be continued and utilized and not waived, is my opinion. So, I just wanted to at least set the, the conversation for why it is that I pulled the item, but I do want to give Richard Ford the ability to present as well, since this is his item.
Great, can you actually hear me?
Yes, you're a little low, wondering Sam if we can maybe increase his volume?
Great, and I'll try and see if I can increase mine.
Go for it.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Perfect, so, what this is, is this is redaction of social security numbers from records that are in our recorder's database, we've already redacted these previously under my predecessor, Doug Whacker, I am not aware if it went out to bid or not to bid, so it's, it's not completely accurate, saying that we don't know if it, that it ever went to bid, I honestly just don't know, that was before my time. I do know that this needs to be done, it's a piece of the records that should have been done, honestly, before probably Doug left, but due to staffing and, and some other challenges, it's taken us this long to get to this point. It is needed to get social security out of there, the reason we don't feel that there's any other vendors is because I go to conferences, and honestly, I'm not seeing a lot of people even offering them. And so, and it's been a while since we've gone to conferences because of COVID, the only vendor I saw, which was years ago, I can't even recall the name, I have not seen in a while, so I don't even know if they're still in business, so as far as I know, this is the only vendor out there. The reason we're choosing this particular vendor is because PFA was the original people that scanned some of the records into our database. In that scan, basically, they should have made sure that the documents were very clear. If in redaction they find a document that is unclear, they are under the obligation, because of that accuracy, to basically do that free of charge or re-scanning it. Now, to, for clarification, since we're talking CoFile, CoFile owns PFA now. In the past, when it was originally done, PFA was a standalone company, they are now owned by CoFile, and so it's all one company at this point. That's where the benefit is of going through one vendor. I don't know of any other vendor, and I don't think it would be any cheaper, you're talking a lot of records, and so, I don't, I don't expect it to be a cost issue. It's not actually, in our case, we're not trying to circumvent the bidding, we honestly just don't think there's any other, anything else to get, and we think this is the most accurate, efficient way to get that job done. It is a one-time shot, meaning we're not going to go back to the same type of needed service, once it's done, the records are done, we redact the current records as we scan and put them into our electronic database. Which the database for clarification is when you come to our office and you want to, you know, search a document, we index the documents that are recorded, and you can search it on the public search, that is what I refer to as, as the database. But that's the reason for basically not going out to bid, it would take more time than it's already taken to get the redaction done, the redaction is very important to get done, and get the social security numbers off those documents as fast as possible, and I, I think it would just delay it, to be perfectly honest. And so I do think it's very key and very important for those documents to get off for the safety of the people that, that have information on those documents, should have been done before I took office a number of years ago. So, there's my case for it, I understand the, the need for going out to bid and for clarity for everybody to make sure we're getting the best situation, but honestly, I, based on my experience, based on the people I've seen at conferences, the other vendors, not many people are offering it, partly because most of the other counties have already done this.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any comments from board members on this item? Yes, Supervisor Pricek?
So what's the timeframe that it would take to go out to bid? So how, how far would this set you back?
Well, given that you had to do an RFP, you had to develop that, you had to send it out, you have to make sure the RFP is all right, you have to receive the bids, which then you have to provide enough time, so I would estimate, probably to be aggressive, six months, between all the, all the pieces, the waiting, the opening, the awarding of the bid, all that.
And I will say, from just my personal opinion, granted I haven't experienced too many RFPs or creating too many RFPs, but you have your scope of services already written in the agreement, which is pretty much what the RFP would have in the core of it, so the RFP just needs to be almost implanted within a template that already exists for an RFP, I would say maybe two to three months if everything was done efficiently, but I don't know what the capacity of staff is to get to it right away.
Yeah, so, so let me, Bruno, I don't mean to interrupt you, but let me clarify that a little bit, so, we close the tax roll, which basically, to clarify for everybody, the tax, property tax pays what, over 50% of the general fund, plus the cities, plus the schools, plus the fire districts, we have to close the tax roll, and we're going to probably do an extension this year, but we close it, you know, traditionally, right around July 1. So you're talking two to three months, it's right in that busy season for us, where we basically get everything off our plate, so to be honest, taking on the RFP right, right now will get delayed because of the priority of closing the tax roll, which funds those agencies I just listed. So that's, that's part of the timing is what would be causing part of the delay.
Okay, thank you.
To clarify for Jessica a little bit.
Any further comments or questions? And I don't believe that timing is a sufficient waiving reason, I think it has three specific reasons why we can waive, and I don't believe that is one of them, and granted that right now we're six years past, or seven years past Doug Whacker, I would say that an additional few months is not exactly a, the death knell to what needs to get done, I want to support you in getting that done, and I think that the best way to move forward in the long run is, I, I plan on bringing back and reviewing a policy for the Board of Supervisors on what we need to do with bidding, because it seems that every week I just see too much waiving of bidding, waiving of bidding, and waiving of bidding, and maybe it's correct, but at the same time, I'm uncomfortable with just moving forward when we don't know if there's more companies, and that's exactly what the bidding process does for us, is to make sure that we know, and I think that the public requires us that we know to make sure that we are doing the right thing. So I appreciate the comments from Mr. Ford, and looking to see if there's any further comments from the board members before we open it up for the public.
Yeah.
Yes, is that your pen?
Yeah, that's my pen today, there you go.
Don't let it roll off.
Yeah, I won't, I'll do my best, but, you know, I do agree with the conversation, you know, I, just a little like clarification, you know, I saw Carol did have a comment when we were talking about it, could I just, you know, ask you what you would kind of estimate on the timeframe too, because I know your office would be involved in helping work through this process, so.
So I do serve as your board's designated purchasing agent, and we have a boilerplate request for proposals document that, that we use regularly, there's a scope of work already identified, because there's one in this contract, I believe an RFP could be put out in a matter of a few hours, of course you have to have a mailing list of who you're sending it to, and then you have to have a, depending on the proposals you receive, if you receive multiple proposals, you'll have a panel that will meet to review them, but this is, this is routine, our office does this regularly, realistically, it's probably going to be a couple of months turnaround, depending on how, how much time you give responders to, to... how much time you give responders to respond to your RFP, and then you have to negotiate a contract and bring it to the board, but it's not an elongated process. And I'm confused as to why the assessor's now stating that he believes there are no other vendors, when his cover memo says that he believes there are. So my recommendation would be to put out an RFP.
You know, and obviously, you know, I think at this point, obviously, making sure we're doing that, you know, and if it is a limited opportunity for the RFP, then we should be able to get it back even, you know, in a more timely manner than the two to three months. So, you know, I'm in support of doing an RFP, I guess is where I'm at at this point, so thank you for pulling this item, Chair.
Okay. Any further comments before we open it up for the public? Anybody in the public have a comment on item 5.4? Okay, seeing none in the boardroom or in the Zoom room, let's bring it back to the board for either further deliberation or action.
If you're prepared, I'll go ahead.
I think we're ready to go.
So a little different than what we have here today, would like to make a motion that we do an RFP for a contract with Lake County, or, you know, I guess that would be...
Would that just be direction to step?
I'd be looking for the motion. Would that be that amount, or?
Ms. Grant, if you can help us...
Essentially, you're not going to take action on the item today as presented. You've reject, if you wish to reject the waiver, you could do that by motion, and then direct that the department follow the standard bidding practices to secure competitive bidding.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And moving on to item 5.18, A, waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of the goods and services, and B, approve and sign the agreement between the County of Lake and Clean Lakes, Inc., for the Aquatic Vegetation Management Program for the fiscal year 2020-21 in the amount of $197,000 and authorize the chair to sign. And so I pulled this item for similar reasons. In speaking with Director De Leon, it has been three years, 2017, so four years, since it's last gone out to an RFP. One of the times that it went out, I don't know the specifics of 2017, but in 2015, there were five bids that came in. My personal opinion is that three years, every three years, we should be looking to rebid things if we're looking to contract for multiple years, just to make sure that that is the best deal that we can find out there. And so I am still in favor of looking to put this item to bid. I do have a slight discomfort at the same time, since this is for 2021, and the timeframe seems to be very small, but at the same time, I still feel similarly about this situation as the prior. It's important that we get these contracts, but I think it's also important that we ensure that our public funds are being utilized in the best of ways, and I will open this up for Director De Leon.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman Sabatier, and good morning, board. Scott De Leon, Water Resources Director. Yes, the last time that we went out to RFP for this project was in 2017. Been advised by staff that we sent the RFP to four bidders at the time. We only received one proposal that year from Clear Lake, or Clean Lakes. We only have two licensed contractors that have approval to work on the lake now. Clean Lakes has been at the top of the list for many of the RFPs, and just a little history, between 2011 and 2015, we did an RFP every year, and for most of those years, Clean Lakes was at the top of the list. So we have an extensive history with working with this company, and they have extensive history working here on the lake. So their past record of performance has been excellent, and so that's why we had recommended waiving the RFP. You mentioned timing, and timing is a big issue here. We need to be on the lake very, very soon with the lower lake levels, the water quality that we have, we can expect a pretty significant weed growth this year. And what I would propose is that if your board would like to see a new RFP for this work, what I would propose is that we utilize their services of Clean Lakes this year, and we can start preparing an RFP for next year's treatment, and we'll be happy to do that. We will miss the window for the treatment of the aquatic plants if we need to prepare an RFP and go through the consultant selection board process, even though, yes, we do have some examples from previous efforts, it still takes time. You've got to give the bidders opportunity to prepare their proposals. This is not a cost-based selection, this is a qualifications-based selection, so there's time for them to prepare their proposals, time to review them through the consultant selection board process, and then, of course, bring it back to your board for approval of a contract. So I think we have an excellent contractor, they've performed very well for us, we've been pleased with the prices that we've received from them, and as I mentioned, 2017, they were the only firm to prepare or provide a proposal in response to our RFP. So I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. I do have one further question. And the contract dates back to February, is there a specific reason why it dates back to February?
No, I, no, I don't know the answer to that. Perhaps the previous contract ended, I don't know. Typically, they, you know, we start looking at weeds, and we start evaluating the growth, and start doing sampling and different things, you know, early in the year. I know we have some scheduled for later this week. They have not performed any work, to my knowledge, and so I don't have the answer for why it would be dated to begin in February.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the board? Supervisor Scott?
I think this contract's a little bit different than the last one we talked about, to the fact that this work needs to be done now. He said, Scott talked about, you know, the short window, I'm thinking that's like now, that we need to be out there taking care of our lake, and with the low lake levels, I think we definitely need to approve this contract, get the work done, but put it out for RFP for next year.
Thank you. Supervisor Pyska?
I agree, and it's a little different than the last contract, because there has been an RFP out a few years ago, but we should focus on this for next year.
Any further comments from the board? Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item, item 5.18? And hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for deliberation or action. Supervisor Crandall?
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of the goods and services, and B, approve and sign the agreement between County of Lake and Clean Lakes Incorporated for the Aquatic Vegetation Management Program for fiscal year 2020 and 21 in the amount of $197,000 and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second from Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Sorry, Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, board, and as I mentioned, we'll begin preparing an RFP for next year, and so next year, when we bring you our recommendations, it'll be followed a RFP and a CSB. Thank you.
Thank you. And it is 10:21, let's go ahead and get started on item 7.2, Consideration of Recommendations for Formation of Roadmap Task Force. So as you all remember, I believe it was April 16th, I don't have the text right in front of me, we had our, yeah, April 16th, we had our workshop, which I just want to provide some details, I really enjoyed our conversation. I think it was a much more, a bit more less formal conversation about what it is that we desire to see in our county. It felt more like a discussion than a board meeting, and I appreciated the way that it was set up. I appreciate the help from administration in providing the legwork to make this happen in the first place. It is, it seems to be the feeling that this has been one of the more successful conversations that we've had in trying to figure out how to move forward, what are we doing this year? Out of that came four goals, as you can see in our memo, develop and maintain a high standard of disaster prevention, preparedness, recovery, that'll be coming up in an item next, create a community revitalization pilot project, continue to support the efforts of the Economic Development Task Force, and continue to support efforts to invest in and develop our workforce. And so today, I would like to create the Roadmap Task Force, which will focus to make sure that these items keep moving forward. Obviously, the Economic Development Task Force is its own entity, that way, we can lean on them, but also provide support and make sure that that's moving forward, and then same as well, there is a classing comp committee that is still working on figuring out ways to invest in and develop our workforce, and we can continue to support them as well. One of the major things that we will focus on is the Community Revitalization Pilot Project. We talked about dilapidated docks, we talked about enhanced code enforcement, and so the task force will be, I'm looking at Supervisor Pyska and myself, Community Development Director, Animal Control Director, Sheriff, and County Administrative Officer, and of course, it doesn't have to be those specific individuals, it could be staff that they feel need to be designated to that task force, in order to figure out how to create a pilot program of making sure that we are not just cleaning up, but we need to look at the long-term process of cleaning up. I know too often, we speak of some of the same areas again, and again, and again, and we need to figure out how to better manage our outcomes. And I know that currently, code enforcement and the sheriff have started a task force together, and so we hope to hear from them at our first meeting to get an idea of what it is that they're doing, how can we supplement the work that they're doing, and how could we learn from their experiences thus far? And so that is, the recommendation in front of you is to create this roadmap task force, and we will come back to you on a quarterly basis to let you know what our efforts and what our results have been. Want to make sure that CAO Hutchinson, if you have any more to add to this, since I know that you've worked with me a lot on both the workshop and creating this memo today?
I think you summed it up very well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And want to make sure that Supervisor Pyska is okay with my volunteering her for this position. I know that you had mentioned you were interested in being a part of it, and then opening it up for any comments. Supervisor Scott?
I will have to agree with everything that you said, it was definitely a productive meeting. I've actually been into a couple other meetings where the community has spoken about our meeting, so they were definitely excited about our discussion, and now is the time to act, because one of the properties that I spoke about that we cleaned up, and I posted pictures, actually caught fire again, because there's squatters back in there. So, you know, we did our due diligence, went in there and cleaned it up, and they're back again, and it's even worse than it was before. So now is the time to act, and I'm glad that we're moving in this direction.
Thank you. Sorry to hear about that.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments from the public? Both in the boardroom and the Zoom room, and it's been a while since I've said anything to the Zoom room, but please press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, or if you're calling via telephone, please dial star nine. And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair?
I move to approve the formation of the roadmap task force.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to item 7.3. And item 7.3, Consideration of Update to Vision 2028, Reimagining Lake County, 10 Key Priorities to Build a Brighter Future. CAO Hutchinson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, during the workshop, as you noted just a few moments ago, Supervisor Pyska pointed out that the original Vision 2028 that was approved by your board in 2018 did not include a specific reference to disaster prevention, preparation, et cetera, and as you know, Lake County has been hit harder by disaster than probably any other county. We're now in our 13th disaster since 2015, counting COVID. So we certainly agree with the supervisor's comments, that it's probably an update to the Vision 2028 is in order to address this, and so staff drafted this language during the meeting, and we hope it meets that need, and we're also open to revision if the board would like to revise it.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska, since this was something you brought to our attention, want to make sure you get the chance to speak?
Yes, it's just a few words to add, but I think it will have a profound impact on how we move forward, and so the line under enhanced public safety is develop and maintain a high standard of disaster prevention, preparedness, and recovery.
Thank you very much.
And just going forward, this just needs to be a part of our plan, again, as we accept the responsibility of where we live and the time that we live in now.
Thank you very much. I do want to add, there was one other change, other than the additional line, and that was changing protect our citizens to protect our residents, and I appreciate that, because not everyone that we serve here in our community are citizens, some of them are residents. And so I appreciate that change as well. Any other comments before we open it up to the public? Supervisor Sam?
Yeah, just a question for Supervisor Pyska. Thank you very much for pointing this out, completely support it. I just wonder if we could add, maybe on that line there, just community collaboration or community involvement to the end of that, because as a county, obviously, I think we're doing everything, we're setting up the opportunity umbrella, but we can't do this alone. It's going to be a complete community effort, and I just, so I just ask maybe if we could, at the end there, just add recovery and community involvement or clean community collaboration, something in that manner. I don't know if someone else has a better suggestion, but I just want to make that very clear. We're looking to set up the opportunity and the umbrella to help everyone in the county, throughout it, all the organizations, so just community collaboration being a big part of that, preparedness and disaster recovery, so.
Is it possible, if I may suggest, develop and maintain a high standard of disaster prevention, preparedness, and recovery while utilizing all community partners in collaboration or some, while utilizing all community collaborations?
How about in collaboration with all community stakeholders?
There you go.
What she said, yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. I agree with that addition, if everyone else, okay. If there's no further comment, Supervisor Scott?
I just want to thank Supervisor Pyska for bringing this to our attention, and honestly, I cannot believe that we forgot... I cannot believe that we forgot this when we put this together because we were all, we've all been living it.
It it was 2018, so it was, we were probably in the midst of a disaster and sometimes it's hard to recognize where you are in the middle of a forest sometimes. So of course, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Any further comments from Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, you had mentioned earlier about enhancing public safety and and I just want to highlight, I'm glad that, you know, I know that's usually been in this in the document in Vision 2028, but in regard to wildfire, of course, I'm glad you brought this forward. But I hi- I highlight this only just to kind of speak about the fact that we're public safety, that the task force and whatnot that are happening on the North Shore recently are very are very very helpful. We're, you know, we have issues with criminals more emboldened because of zero bail. They get right out. And so the public in my district have been doing neighborhood watches and we were trying to collaborate them together. And so on, I know I spoke about this in our meeting that we had, but I just, I I want to highlight this because I like the fact that the community is standing on their own two feet and trying to meet about these things. We have separate meetings from town halls talking about this. And so so I like that the communities are doing these things on top of going along with our Vision twenty eight, 2028, because they're, it's in tandem with it. And so just wanted to highlight that as you mentioned it.
Thank you. If there's no further comments from the board, then let's go ahead and open it up to the public. I believe we have a public comment here. If you want to step up to the microphone, please. And again, if you're in the Zoom room, raise your hand and we'll call on you when it's your turn.
Hello, my name is Justin Quayle. I own a farm in Lake, on the way to Lake Pillsbury and DeShields Ranch. We've been in evacuation for the last two years. Fire trucks even yesterday were going up and down our road. And we're a cannabis farm. We're not allowed to cut any trees because we're in the early activation program. And the fire company came in and cut trees on our property.
So before you keep going, and I don't mean to be rude and interrupt, I want to make sure that we're on the subject.
Yes, it is fire protection.
Okay.
We hire people, I've already hired somebody from parole to work on our farm, but we can't go farther to get anywhere. We need an inspection, but we're cleaning out. I've got my whole entire neighborhood in DeShields. We burned all the way up to the top. We've been shut down for two years. We can't get anybody to come out and do inspection to get our business up and running. Otherwise, I would clean that whole entire mountain. We've already started. The fire company, when we had a fire last week, came out and said how amazing that we're making our property a hundred and whatever acres it is into a complete park. But we need those finances to get that state license so we can keep moving forward to help the community in these national forests.
Obviously, you're very passionate about what you want to discuss with us, but
Yes, it's about cleaning up the forest so we can
But we're we're talking about, we're talking about adding a line to our vision statement. We can't help you specifically on this item with the certain issue that you're discussing. I would say speak with your supervisor or go speak with community development to figure out how you can deal with that. If you want to support us adding this item to our Vision twenty twenty
I'm a hundred percent on supporting. I've been in an evacuation zone for the last two years. Any way we can help the community clean up and cut down and actually clean the roads up correctly and cut back, we're willing to help. We're willing to pay that tax money to do, help do that. I've been willing to take one of my properties, we have a business in San Rose also, and I'm willing to, what is it called, fund a road so we can get that going. I I mean, there's people up there in those mountains that really want help from you guys to help get this cleaned up. But if you've got permits to cut trees, if you, you have to clean these roads up somehow out there. It is a fire disaster. I mean, if you go up through Mendo, they actually cleared the roads thirty feet on the easement that you guys have to clean the roads up thirty feet in each direction and actually get it done, that would be awesome. Because we are out there fighting those fires ourselves. The last two years, we've been out there fighting them and nobody comes out to help it clean up. There is nothing. We can barely get them to grade the road once a year. So please listen to the people that are out there truly fighting in the woods, in the national forest. We need a little bit of help too. And we've been asking. Nobody listens. Thank you for my words.
Thank you. And I don't see any hands up in the Zoom room. Any further comments in the room? All right, let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we update Vision 2028, reimagining Lake County, ten key priorities to build a brighter future with the language that
Yeah, as amended from the recommendation in the submittal.
I'm gonna interrupt that motion real quick and and open up discussion again. Is it ten key priorities when now it's eleven? So just we we added one. Wondering if maybe we can change that.
It's it's part of enhanced public safety, so it's still ten.
Oh, because the main header is okay. I counted the bullet points and I didn't, okay. Never mind. Just wanted to make sure.
Always good to be accurate.
Thank you, Carol.
So motion was Ms. Grant just checking in. You looked at me. I want to make sure we're not doing anything wrong?
No, I'm just paying attention.
Okay.
And I, you know, I didn't have my microphone on, so I want to make sure Johanna did hear that. I just, I just noticed that I did not. Johanna, did you hear the amended or the motion as to approve the amended Vision 2028 update?
Yes, I heard that.
Thank you, Johanna.
So I believe it was a motion from Supervisor Pisca and a second from Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And moving on to item seven point four. Consideration of resolution, amending resolution number twenty twenty one three four, establishing position allocations for fiscal year 2020, 21, budget unit number twenty seven oh two, planning. CAO Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, for many years, the Community Development Director classification was allocated to the planning budget unit, which is budget unit twenty seven zero two. In February twenty twenty twenty, your board took action to combine community development with the Department of Public Works and Water Resources. And so in the budget cycle that followed, the classification was eliminated from budget unit twenty seven oh two. If your board approves this resolution, it would reestablish the Community Development Director position in that planning budget unit twenty seven oh two. As you know, that position and the department in fact deal with a very high volume of complex work. It's essential to the residents needing our services and vital to the local economy. So the recommendation today is that your board reestablish the Community Development Director position in planning unit, budget unit twenty seven zero two.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments from any supervisors? Okay, I do want to make a quick statement saying that community development is is very vital to our economic well-being. It is probably one of the most difficult departments. I don't think that I know any community development anywhere where anyone is truly a hundred percent happy. It's such a stressful situation. You have your finances, potentially you're already in debt and and the money you've borrowed to create the business or do the activity you want to get. And hiccups are pretty much the norm, unfortunately. It's never always easy, smooth sailing. There's so many details in every little project. And so it's a very difficult task and I believe and and my opinion, I believe that this will help us in ensuring that it has the greatest level of support. I do want to say real quick that I do appreciate the work that our current director has provided to the planning department, Scott DeLeon, and that hopefully that we are correct and that this will create the better situation that we're looking for. So opening it up to the public and any public comment? We have one comment and that is phone sixty two zero five. When you're unmuted, if you please provide your full name, first and last.
Good morning. My name is Bart Levinson and my understanding is that before the valley fire, there were seven people in the planning department who oversaw the processing of building permits and that they typically oversaw twenty five permits a year. Now we're told that there is a fully staffed department, but that there are three hundred plans needing review currently. I'm sure the department is operating as it, as hard as it possibly can and doing the best that it can. My question is, what is the correct number of planners that should be available in the county to handle the current need?
And I think that is a good question where it's not an easy answer. I think that what we've done so far, such as contracting to get help on the outside to help support with the level of applications that we have currently, it's difficult to equip a staff for what may be just a small balloon of applications where in the following years it will dip back down. Because the last thing we want to do is lay people off that are not needed. And I think it's a difficult answer. Is this a continuous thing? Is this a temporary thing? It's difficult to tell. So it's it's a good question, a very difficult answer. But thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to add to that. My concern is, if I understand your agenda correctly, you're thinking to hire a new director and I understand, well, I know that there are a number of large projects that are in the middle of being put through and it would seem reasonable, given that we acknowledge that there is a bottleneck and there is a difficulty, that large projects be put on pause until a new director is in place and it is established what the staff can properly and appropriately handle, looking towards the best health for the community, the community that's here now, the community for the future, to have the best health for Lake County.
Thank you for that. And I know that my personal goal is to have as seamless of a transition as possible that will have the least impact on our applicants. But that's only speaking for myself. I don't want to speak.
Is it possible to consider pausing large applications at this time?
And that will, I I would say no from my personal opinion, but again, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the board. And thank you for your comments today.
Thank you.
Any other public member have questions or comments? Okay, let's bring it back to the board. Any further conversation or action?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see if we can keep going. Seven point five. Consideration of change number four, five, six and seven, FEMA FMAG culvert replacement number one and number two project, federal project numbers FMAG DR five zero nine three dash one dash one R and FMAG DR five one one two dash one dash one R, bid number nineteen dash oh one for an increase of nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty eight dollars and sixty six cents and a revised contract amount of six hundred and sixty seven thousand three hundred and sixty nine dollars and ninety three cents. Director DeLeon?
Good morning, Board. What I have for you here are four change orders. I'll be very brief and go through each of them just for a moment. You'll notice change order four was a, some extra work that was performed during construction as well as change order five in a different location, some some work to redesign an inlet. Change order five actually decreased the cost of the contract. Change order six, we had the contractor do quite a bit of extra work to redesign some what's called a saddle. It's where they relocate a forest main around the culvert that we were trying to install. We're going to go ahead and fund that through this project, but you'll note that ultimately the cost is going to be the responsibility of either the utility owner or special districts and they're working that out. But in order to get the contractor paid, we're we're going to go ahead and include it in the project and and then seek reimbursement at a later time. And then change order seven is our balancing change order and it also has a decrease of the total price of the contract. The net result of the four contract change orders, as you mentioned, is an increase of nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty eight dollars and sixty six cents. And then you have your revised total contract amount. I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you might have for these four change orders, but we're recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I do know that I do prefer the ones where we save money, but it does happen that we have to spend more. But I appreciate the level of detail. And obviously, this is based on the fact that this is a federal grant, that level of detail is required to get back to them, to make sure that their money was spent wisely. And so appreciate the appreciate the agenda item. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments or questions from the public on this item? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Just have one question. Can we do it all in one motion or do we need separate motions for each change order?
I believe that the department has suggested that you do it all in one motion. The only caveat to that is that if any change order should, any individual change order should be found to be incorrect, then the entirety would have to be taken up again. But if your board's confident that the documentation's accurate, you may do them in one motion. They all involve the same project.
Well, just, well, let's get a clarification with Director DeLeon on the line. Could we, would like to be able to do this in one motion and just double checking to make sure that everything is true and correct at this point, so.
Well, yeah. To the best of my knowledge, these are, these have been well prepared and are accurate and of course, I'm I'm going to go out on a limb here and tell you that I think you should do them all in one item and that will almost guarantee that that there's a mistake somewhere and I'll be back. But I'm going to go ahead and and stick with our recommendation that you approve all four of them at once.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Let's go for it.
All right, make a motion to approve Board of Supervisors for the change orders number four, five, six and seven. And the board authorized the chair to execute said CCOs for an increase of nineteen thousand five hundred and twenty eight dollars and sixty six cents and a revised contract amount of six hundred and sixty seven thousand three hundred and sixty nine dollars and ninety three cents.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon and a second from Supervisor Pisca. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on to item seven point six. Consideration of contract change order number one with StorSun Construction, Inc. for the Soda Bay CSA twenty redwood water tanks replacement project, CAL OES disaster number forty two forty and project number forty two forty dash forty dash thirty six R for an increase of thirty thousand fifty five dollars and nine cents and a revised contract amount of six hundred fifty five thousand one hundred and thirty nine dollars and fifty four cents. Director Harder?
Yes, thank you Chairman Sabatier, members of the board. What you have before you today is consideration of contract change order num- number one for the subject project. This is the replacement of This is the replacement of two of our redwood tanks out in Soda Bay with bolted steel tanks. This is a FEMA hazard mitigation grant project funded at a 75% level through a mitigation program as a result of the valley fire. The project is wrapping up. This is to formalize a field direction which was provided to the contractor during excavation for the foundations for the new tanks. Unsuitable material was discovered underneath the ground under where the existing tanks were. Direction was given to the contractor to overexcavate and import suitable material and build that back up in order to proceed with the construction of the new tanks. So this formalizes that field direction. There is contingency available within the grant project and within our project budget internally and will result in a increase of little over $30,000 of the total project cost.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Any comments from the public on this item? And seeing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve contact change order number one with the Storson Construction, Incorporated for the Soda Bay CSA 20 redwood water tank replacement project, CAL OES disaster number 4240 and project number 4240-40-36R for an increase of $30,055.09 and a revised contract amount of $655,139.54.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second from Supervisor Crandall. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, I believe that takes care of everything except for our calendars, so let's go ahead and get that started. And Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, obviously a long board meeting today, we'll continue on with that tomorrow. I have on my calendar, Lake ABC and LTA board meeting. Do you have that one on there?
I believe I do. It is tomorrow, yes.
Yeah, okay, nice. Popped up on a different day than on another calendar. So yeah, so I have that one obviously tomorrow and then Thursday and Friday, I have a couple of projects to be looking at down in South County. I know we've got some, as I said, there are some projects that are happening. I'm going to go out and be visiting one property and also looking at some other issues that have been prepared for fire season. We have some issues down in the creeks, down in Middletown and other areas, so I'm working with some of our local advisory boards, at least some emails or texts I got today that I'm going to be out looking at some projects. So with that, be back here on, I'll be having my meeting on Monday with Carol and then back here on Tuesday.
All right, thank you very much. Vice Chair Crandall?
So today, after this, we'll conduct a gender review, which I think I missed last week. TID, are you, are you making that tomorrow as well or?
I am making that.
Okay, excellent. So I'll be, I go as well, but you're, you're the actual representative, but I go to just be there and so since I'm the alternate. With that, I know we have scheduled a cannabis tax meeting at 11:30 to 1:00. I didn't realize I conflicted. Is there, is there someone that can attend for me or should I, because I could cancel the other thing, I really don't want to, but if there's someone else that can attend?
I'll be there.
Okay.
So I don't know if we need another second supervisor?
Well, I know that I was the other one that was in, they asked for me to be the other supervisor, but...
You're the, you're on the designated committee for cannabis tax spending and so it's staff's preference.
Okay.
We could look at a different date if you'd like.
Can we do Friday?
I cannot do Friday because I'll be away for a few days.
I could do Thursday.
Oh, we go.
It would have to be sometime a week or so.
I'll just do it. I'll just do it. It's fine.
Thank you.
And I just want to apologize because there's at least three to four meetings I missed last week. I've been working on a family issue that's really a difficult one and so last week it took me a lot of meetings that I missed, at least three or four. And so trying to recover from that, but I'm getting back on schedule here and so I will attend that, so I'll be a part of that.
Thank you so much.
I'll have, I have a meeting in Clear Lake Oaks before my earth meeting at 4:00 PM and then CSA meeting at 7:00 in the evening and then area agency on aging on Thursday and then I'll be attending the 6:00 PM, I put Wilder than Wilder, Wild, but I don't think that's what it's called. It's, it's the fire, it's for the fire, it's the event, right? Yeah. The reason I put Wilder than Wilder is because that's what was put back in the last one that they had. I have a meeting in the Upper Lake on Friday in the afternoon. Monday, I will, I have a CAO meeting in the three and then I am doing, I was asked to be, I think we all were asked to be at Woodland Community College or something like that. How is that going to work Brown Act wise or how do we, you know, that's?
I think that the usual rules apply where either none of us can speak if we're just going to listen, since we're not members of that meeting officially, we're guests and so either only two of us show up so we can both speak or all of us show up and none of us speak, I would suspect is the way to, I'm looking at Ms. Grant for any further guidance.
Yes, I know that I had spoken to the legal counsel for the city of Clear Lake, well, via email, who did not realize that a majority of the city council had intended to attend as of yesterday. So I would caution you, if this is a problem solving meeting, i.e. issues where your board may then take these matters up, you have to be very careful when you all appear because consensus building does not necessarily require that you speak. It can be as simple as you all looking at each other and nodding your heads. So caution would dictate two of you, but if more of you want to go, I would caution you not to, not to speak because whomever else among you is in the audience, if two of you get up, then you've got a consensus, however inadvertently. And if anything here is more than just simply education, again, if your board might be called upon to do a resolution to consider any type of action, you do have to be careful here.
Thank you.
If you all just go and are very careful, I suppose that's all right, but again, you do have to be very wary of inadvertent consensus building.
And I think that that just means if we see more than two of us, turn off your video. That way there's not even any look at the face to see if you have any reaction. Supervisor Simon?
No, you know, you bring up a very good point on that. You know, I think that it is very important that supervisors are ten, have an opportunity to engage with the education conversation. So obviously completely support, I was, you know, just did the keynote speech for the college, so always pushing that, but you know, I would step back in attending the meeting or even get it on the Zoom there if the opportunity for other members would like to go and attend to really engage with that conversation, how we move forward. So I just want to put that out there.
Thank you, appreciate that.
That's all I have, yeah.
Okay, and then let's go to Supervisor Scott.
Okay, tomorrow I have cannabis tax 11:30 and then I have a 1 o'clock bimonthly core meeting with Lakeport. On the sixth, I have a meeting with, another meeting with the Recreation Center Feasibility Study. And then 3 o'clock, COC meeting, which I actually have a conflict. Do I have an, does, do I have an alternate, one of you guys, to help me with the COC? Or is it just me?
I don't know that we have an alternate.
Continuum of care.
Continuum of care. It's at 3 o'clock on Thursday and the reason why I ask, I'm going to be a half an hour late, but if you don't show up to the COC meeting, you not only lose your vote for that day, you also lose your vote for the following month.
Oh man, that's rough.
So you have to be there to vote. So I didn't know if somebody could help me out, if they could show up from 3:00 to 3:30?
I'm checking your committee.
It has me, it has me listed.
Committee list, oh, you found a clip.
Are you able to do that?
I'm open, I can.
Yeah, only from 3:00 to 3:30 and then I can jump on. That'd be great.
We have a, a area agency on aging at 1:30, but if we're finished before then, I can jump on. Does it 3:30, right?
No, from 3:00, 3:30 and then I would jump on from 3:30 to 4:00.
Okay.
End it.
Okay.
That's one of the great things about Zoom, no travel time.
You want to send me the link?
If you look up the Lake County COC, you'll find all the information on the website. They actually do a beautiful job of putting, putting up all the information and all the back information. So if anybody's ever wanting to know what's going on in the COC, they have a beautiful website. Check that out. And then Sunday, I'm a, I'm a little upset, I haven't heard anybody say anything about Mother's Day. So Mother's Day, make sure you honor your mothers on Sunday. I will definitely be looking at my children to be cooking me breakfast. On Monday, Hope Rising Executive Committee meeting at 8:30 and then I have doctor's appointments with my children and I'm back here on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pisca?
I just want to give a little report from the weekend. As I mentioned earlier, it was National Wildfire Prevention Day on May 1st and so I was at a event with the Kelseyville Riviera, doing a drive-through preparedness event, which was great. I'm happy to see so many of those around and hope we can keep those continuing. They were able to access several thousand dollars through the Listos Grant, as was the Riviera Heights the week before. So if you, if anyone's interested in having these events, there is funding available. That grant has closed, but there's always options. Hillseyville Fire Protection District is considering a measure for November that would, it would be a measure that would be about $194 for a residence, that would be added to their tax bill for a new fire station in the Riviera Heights or Buckingham area. So that was the first public meeting. There are going to be several going forward if that board of directors decides to go forward. They've hired a consulting company called Civic Mic, M.I.C., and if you go to civicmic/kelseyville, you can find more information about the measure. There, if you sign up for the emails, they're really great. Every time they get a question, they email the whole group with the question and their answer. So the group Civic Mic seems to be really responsive if anyone has more questions about We'll see how it goes if they decide whether or not to go forward. The burn ban is in effect. All burns are now prohibited. May 1st was the day the burn ban went into effect and while I was in the Kelseyville Riviera, there was an illegal burn happening. So just a reminder, no more fires. Do the work that you can around your homes, but don't burn. You can chip or you can take things to Quackenbush, there's a number of things that you can do, but no more burning. So tomorrow morning, I've got the TID, 8:30. In the afternoon, we're doing a dry run for our event, then cavern check-in in the evening. And again, we're in fire season now, so the radio, volunteer radio network is very, very important. They alert us to whatever's going on in the county. On Thursday, the AAA meeting and then in the evening at 6 o'clock, we'll be having our preparedness event. I don't have anything on Friday.
Don't worry, it'll fill up.
A pool cleanup day with the Pine Summit Pool Group on Sunday is Mother's Day and I will not be going to the Woodland College, just to put that out there. I was, I was interested in going, but I have a doctor's appointment, so I'll have to miss that and that's what I've got.
Thank you very much. For my report, I do want to go back to a meeting that I was a part of on Wednesday. It was a Lake County drought preparedness workshop. Every water purveyor was part of the meeting, or at least the majority of all water purveyors were there. Everyone is doing their best to prepare. Our lake typically loses anywhere between two to three feet rumzy just in evaporation alone. As we know, today we're at about .8, I believe. I haven't looked at my email at the bottom, but I believe we were at .8 something yesterday, so we got to be close to that. And so everyone is just kind of paying attention, how it's going to impact all of those that are utilizing our lake for water, those that use it for irrigation. It's something to, it's a very important topic, especially right now. So if you haven't changed your behaviors in trying to conserve water, please look at doing so. It's going to be really important this year, especially if we don't see another drop of rain until possibly fall. I know that I have seen rain during the summer, but it's never been a large amount to make a drastic change. And so we spoke earlier about fire preparedness. Absolutely, please do your best to prepare and make safe your area of residents and then also make sure that you can conserve as much water as possible because our firefighters will need it this year and we also need our tap water to continue running. Another meeting that I took part of was the American Rescue Plan. We have approximately 12 point, it's close to $13 million that will be coming to us over the course of the next two years. We are planning on receiving, I believe, in late May or mid-May, the first half of that, so approximately 6.5 million. The discussions so far have not been concrete as far as exactly what we are planning to do, but we basically said that we need to be bold and this is one times money that we could really use to change the face of Lake County and so let's do so. So I'm excited to continue those conversations and eventually get to further details and bring it back to the board. Next week, uh, next week, LTA on tomorrow, obviously agenda review first for today, then tomorrow, LTA. Looks like I'm starting off with a treasurer tax collector. Am I on the right week? I'm on the wrong week. There we go. LTA tomorrow, I have a, if I'm still open and available in the afternoon, a CC4C meeting. On Thursday, on, at this point, looks pretty clear and then I will be part of a CSAC phone call and a Clear Lake City Council meeting later on that evening. On Friday, I will be doing an interview with a national team that is looking on how to move the dial on our health and poverty issues here in Lake County. Looking forward to that conversation. Actually, on Friday, I will also be meeting with the Woodland Community College staff to discuss with them in a less formal manner, some of the things that they're looking to bring up on Monday, so I can have a little bit of a pre-meeting there. And then on Monday, and just to let you know, I am planning on being at the Lake County Campus Forum that afternoon, but on Monday, we'll be meeting with our CAO, doing part of our CSAC call, being at the Lake County Campus Forum and then later on that evening, we have a pegboard meeting and then back here for a meeting on Tuesday. And that ends my report. So it is 11:09.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Oh, did we miss something?
Me and you both did. We did our Middle Creek Restoration meeting yesterday and we will be coming back, I think, towards the end of this month to, to have a report and possibly some letters to ensure we can get some things moving when it comes to, I think it's the Army Corps, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you for adding that. And we have another do-over.
Just one clarification on, because I heard you're going to go on Monday. Is there anyone else that was planning on attending the community college?
I'll go. Yeah, I was planning on going, so you...
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for making sure of that.
Sorry, Jay.
Thank you. And so it is 11:09. I think we're going to take a break before we go directly into closed session. We have two items. 8.1, public employee appointment pursuant to government code, section 54957B. A, interviews a public health officer. B, appointment of public health officer. 8.2, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code, section 54956.9D2E1, one potential case. And with that, we will adjourn to a recess and closed session. Thank you everybody for joining us in this meeting. Have a wonderful day.